Welcome. It's September 5th. Madeline Skels Harris has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think it was Tuesday morning, I was in Atlanta and I took my seven-year-old grandbaby to school. And when she got out of the car, she said, "By me me, I love you." And she waved and waved and waved until she actually went inside the school. It saddens me so much what has happened in Georgia at that school with the shooting. I cannot imagine getting a call saying that was the last time I would see my granddaughter, Mariah. So, let's just pause right now, just for a word of prayer in your minds. For the families that lost loved ones, I think it was two kids and two teachers, and then I think nine others were injured. It's uncalled for. So, let's just pause right now for a word of silence. Your heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here one more time. We didn't have to be here, but it's through your grace that we are here. Lord, we know everything is in your hands, but it seems like our world is turning upside down with a lot of negative. Lord, today we just come to you with grateful hearts. Thank you for our health. Thank you for our facility that we are in, and all the city employees, the firefighters, and the police who take care of us, Lord, just everyone. And thank you, Lord, for the citizens. We pray for the homeless, Lord. We pray for domestic violence. We just pray for children who are in need, that are hungry and not clothed. Lord, we just have so much to be thankful for. Sometimes, Lord, I think I take things for granted, like after this meeting going and getting in my car. That's a blessing, Lord. And, Lord, see each and every one of us home safely. And bless our school system, Lord. Bless the little children that are trying to learn and just be happy. Bless all the administration. And, Lord, we just cannot thank you enough for the, all the privileges and the blessings that you give us on a daily place basis that we take for granted. Lord, as we get ready to handle the business of the city, we ask that you move into the midst of us. And you say when one and two are gathered, you will be in the midst. So, Lord, we ask for your guidance, that guidance, as we make decisions tonight, Lord. This is my prayer that I ask in your darling son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to say a quick congratulations. We had our swearing-in ceremony at four o'clock. And so, welcome Councilman Wade, Councilman Wright, and Councilman Shacklet back to another four years. I don't know whether to say congratulations or condolences, but it's probably a little bit of both. All right, so we'll move to public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll move to your consent agenda. You have seven items on your consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Can we move one of those items?
Sure. Which one would you like to move?
Number one.
All right, we'll move item one, and we'll put that down to other business.
Thank you.
All right. All right, items two through six, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Was that two through six, Mayor?
Two through six. We have one, excuse me, two through seven, and we're moving item one to other business. Yep.
Motion in a second, then?
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to minutes. You have the June 6th through August 22nd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, all right, you have land use matters ordinance 24026. This is rezoning property along East Vine Street. Second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, all right, we have ordinance 24025. This is our ethics code. This is second and final reading from legal. Adam, any comments?
Just that the, the ordinance before you is identical to the one that was presented to you at prior meeting, with the exception of the change to section 2-322. And that was the amendment that was passed at that meeting.
Would you explain that amendment? I know we had a couple of council members here, we're not here for that.
Sure. That, that 2-322 deals with employees and city officials deal, doing, performing non-city work. And there was a posit, there was a provision in the, a prior draft of the ordinance that was presented at the last meeting that applied to all officials elected and appointed that, that would have prohibited a city official who either voted on or participated in deliberation on something, an item that was up for approval by the body on which that official served from performing work in their private employment in connection with that project or that development. What this, how that provision was amended at the last meeting was that it was made so that only applies to city council members. It does not apply, for example, to members of the Board of Zoning Appeals, or the Planning Commission, or the Parks and Rec Commission.
Any questions or discussion?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
I called you Ms. Wright.
Okay.
Ms. Tucker, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Many won't remember this, but when I first got elected, Ms. Wright was the city recorder, and she called me Mayor Bragg out of, out of just habit. So, I'm sitting here signing this stuff, and I am so sorry.
It's okay.
All right.
No worries.
All right. We'll move to ordinance 24018, City Code, Chapter 3380 changes. This is second and final reading for water resources.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, new business, Resolution 24R26. This is Truist Bank Credit Card Authorization.
Yes, just due to staffing changes, this resolution is needed to authorize Mr. Rozia and myself to act on the city's behalf with Truist Bank for our, as our credit card provider. I recommend for approval and happy to answer any questions.
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Tucker, please call the roll after the motion, a second.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Resolution 24R25, this is budget amendment number two. Director Duke.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, I'm presenting a resolution for your approval to recognize new revenues awarded to city schools with corresponding expenditures. These new revenue sources were approved by the school board on August 13th. Murfreesboro City Schools was awarded $21,775 from the Nissan Foundation, which will be used for our robotics program. We received a donation of $12,647 from the Community Investment Trust, which will be used for our new mobile family resource center. We're also recommending the transfer of $24,700 from fund balance to combine with the cost of that vehicle. The $24,700 actually is insurance proceeds from the former Family Resource Mobile Center that was damaged beyond repair during a flash flood event last spring. Finally, MCS received $89,398 in Title IX funds to address the needs of our homeless population. This resolution recognizes the increase in revenues as well as corresponding expenditures, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Director Duke, roughly speaking, what percentage of students encounter homelessness or experience that challenge at some point in time in the school year?
So, I can give you the exact number. At the end of last year, we had 590 students that were certified at some point as a student experiencing homelessness. So, that, once they're certified during the year, they keep that certification all year. I will say that was a pretty dramatic jump for us. That was actually over a 40% increase just last year in our unhoused population.
Wow.
Huge.
Well, thank you to Nissan for the $21,000 grant.
Absolutely.
That's fantastic. We appreciate that very much. Any other questions? If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Trey. All right, we'll move to on motion, Housing Rehabilitation, 437 South Highland Avenue. Ms. Scholz.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Good evening. The item before you is for a housing rehab project at 437 South Highland. The work includes installing a step-in shower, replacement windows, refurbishing a handicap ramp deck, and some other minor repairs. Rubicon Engineering Services is low bidder at $54,000. So, we would recommend approval.
Any questions for Director Scholz?
When we do these community development block grants for these, these homes, does that have to be an owner-occupied home? In other words, Mr. Smith is the applicant, Mr. Smith lives in the house?
They have to live in the house. Yes, sir.
Okay.
For, under the CDBG program, which this one is, yes.
Okay. I'll, I'll come back to item number one that we moved during the other business, because there's something that caught my attention.
Okay.
If there's no other questions, I would recommend approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Tucker, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have item 15, Affordable Housing Assistance, Legacy Point.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This item has to do with our affordable housing program. We're helping four homeowners provide a, we're providing them down payment assistance on their homes. That is in Legacy Point, so we recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have the Approach Mitigation Design Work Grant. Director Kirk, are you?
Hello, Mayor, members of the city council. For the last couple of years, as you know, we've worked very hard on our hard surfaces, our pavements, rehabbing those. And you can, you can see some nice pictures of those on our GIS. The 2024 imagery is there, so you can see some really good-looking pavement there. And we're still working with the FAA and getting some of the approaches and all that taken care of since we changed and displaced that threshold. So, this next part that we're going to be working on in the two items I bring you tonight have to do with the imaginary surfaces around the airport, our approach surfaces that protect the airspace around our airport so that our aircraft can come in and out safely and efficiently. So, the first one is a grant that will help us with the design work for the approach mitigation, and this is a federal 90%, a state 5%, 5% local grant for $264,400 for the design work to assist us with looking at the approach for runway 36 and mitigation work, which means looking at penetrations of trees and things like that where we're going to be going in removal and replacement with lower-growing trees. And it's going to be quite a bit of work and effort. There will be an environmental assessment involved in this process. LTL Shock Group, which is based out of Nashville and is nationally known for doing this type of work, is on the team with Barge to assist us with this program. So, the important part, the first item, is the grant from the Aeronautics Division. So, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them at this time.
Any questions for Chad?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to item 17. This is the Approach Mitigation Design Work Authorization. Chad?
So, now that the grant is taken care of, now we have the work authorization with Barge Design Solutions, and they will be the ones that will be heading up this team, working with Aeronautics, FAA. And again, on their team will be LTL Shock Group. They will be the ones that will be really assisting us with communications with our neighbors on this project and helping us, guide us through this project. It will take about a year to do, so this work authorization is for $237,960, $237,960 with Barge Design Solutions. Again, this is paid for through the federal BIL funding, state and local.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, all right, thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
All right, move to item 18, Hazen and Sawyer Master Services Agreement. Valerie.
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Everwater. I have Darren over here to my right. He's got darts on me, so I have to pull up my PowerPoint.
It's all about the PowerPoint.
All about the PowerPoint. Valerie! Okay, so Hazen Sawyer has been working for the city through a standard professional services contract, creating a water model of our West Fork Stones River since 2021. And that model is completed and has been submitted to TDEC in July. And they've been working with TDEC to get their buy-in on the model to show that the expansion and the additional discharge from the wharf will not degrade the water quality in the West Fork Stones River. TDEC had a couple minor revisions, and after those revisions are complete, the work will be completed with the initial contract. So, we are asking for two things. One is for a master services agreement to continue that work and to complete the work in preliminary engineering and permitting required for the plant expansion. But to do that, we are asking for approval for a master services agreement with them. So, staff requests approval of the master services agreement first.
Move for approval. Second.
And with the master services agreement, we approved, we are ready.
Hold on one second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Now, Valerie, item 19.
So, I'd mentioned I was presenting them together. Task orders one through five, we are requesting approval now that we have the master services agreement approved. Task orders one through five are for the preliminary engineering and step one of that, as I said, was the model for the West Fork Stones River. I won't go through the model highlights, but the next step is to work towards the NPDS permit, and Hazen and Sawyer and SSR are teaming together in this, these one, task orders one through five. We will be working on that in the fall of 2024. Then, here's a, just a picture of what the plant expansion may look like. We hope to get the permitting and approval to start the plant expansion around 2027, 2028. And here are the associated fees and tasks, one through five, for a total of $894,000. And we request approval for tasks one through five.
If no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item 20, Fountains Agreement. This is the Fifth Amendment. Ms. Huddleston.
Yes, Mayor McFarland and members of council, I will not be exercising my Fifth Amendment rights on this agreement tonight, but do present it to you. We ask that you approve the amendment to the agreement where Mr. Grabey is asking for an additional 18 months on his start deadline. And we also modified the agreement that would allow a little bit different approach if he needs to ask for additional time in the future. And then we also are authorizing him to be able to use parcel 2B and parcel 3 as an extension of his work area out there. We review this internally and recommend approval of the amendment. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
If there's no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 21, Caroline Farms Road Development Agreement, First Amendment.
Yes, and this is an amendment to a road development agreement that established a way to construct a connection between Tonsil Lane and Cherry Lane. And we did that through Caroline Farms. The work was proceeding nicely, and then we ran into some complications in the field for a 152-foot portion of what we now call Quarter Horse Drive. The developer and contractor were not able to construct that with the subdivision, and the city was not able to clean up the conflicts in time. So, the, Mr. Dotson asked that we look at the contract and maybe consider an amendment, and so tonight we proposed an amendment that would allow him to pay fees in lieu of for that 152 feet. And he would also transfer to the city 45,000 square feet of wetlands that would be adjacent to the Jordan Farm, and we would use that for wetland preservation. We reviewed this internally and drafted the amendment, and we recommend approval tonight.
I want to make sure and disclose, I think Mr. Huddleston can attest to this, I'm, I'm a part-owner in Caroline Farms LLC, but at no time have I had, as Mr. Huddleston texted me and highlighted that this was coming up, but I've not had any discussion, not been involved, so I'm going to be abstaining from this, this vote. Does that sound correct, Mr. Huddleston?
That's, that's correct, Mayor.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Abstain. All right, we'll move to item 22.
Mayor, I move that we table this to a further date.
We have a motion for deferral. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Do we have any board and commission appointments? Counsel, I, I do want to let you know, and we've had a lot of discussion, I think Darren, you're going to put this on our workshop regarding the cable commission?
Yes, sir.
We are going to have a discussion about, years ago, when there was only Comcast, we had a statutory requirement to manage the franchise fees. That changed when AT&amp;T came in, and now we've got lots of different other options. So, I think we're going to talk about whether we need to have a cable commission moving forward, and then what we, we do with that. So, wanted to let you know, that's at our next workshop.
September 12th.
Yep.
Next Thursday.
So, that, that is coming up, but I'll let you know that. Do we have any beer permits?
Yes, we have two regular beer permits tonight. One is for an ownership change at 1745 Old Fort Parkway, and one is for a new location for a grocery market at 452 North Thompson Lane. And we also have a special event beer permit for the MTSU Foundation. These have all met our requirements, and we recommend approval pending final building and codes inspections.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade. Yes, we have two tonight to Rutherford County Circuit, Circuit Clerk. One for $74,085 and one for $62,275.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, other, under other business, we have item one from the consent agenda, Housing Rehabilitation, Change Order 1214 Wingate Street. Ms. Schultz.
Other question? Go ahead.
Thank you. So some time ago, we started a project at 1214 Wingate that involved replacing windows and a rear sliding door. When the original sliding doors removed, we discovered some subfloor and rotten floor joists that had to be replaced. So this change order covers that work, plus demoing the existing flooring and putting new laminate flooring down.
The owner of this property occupies this property. And the reason I ask that is because on the GIS maps, clicking on it, looking at it, going to the property tax records, it had a PO box, whereas the others basically were, showed the owner's address, matched the property address. In this instance, it had PO box for the owner, but then it showed the property address. But we're certain the owner occupies this property. That's my question.
I've been there several times, and the lady identifies herself as the owner. I mean, I'd be glad to check into it because that is a requirement, but.
That's all I would ask.
Yeah, we, we do, even before we approve their application, we do checking into that kind of stuff. But I'll, we'll double check.
Just double check. That's all I'm asking.
That's fair enough.
Okay. I move for approval.
Second.
You want to make that subject to this being the owner?
Subject to this being the owner.
Second.
All right, motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business from council? Or, excuse me, from staff or council?
I think Ms. Tucker did an outstanding job tonight. I mean, Ms. Wright would be proud of her.
I mean, I like reverted back like six years ago.
I can't wait to just, I'm going to text her and tell her that it came up tonight.
And, and it was not a joke.
I know.
Yeah. Yeah. Darren, do you want to update us on our upcoming schedule?
For next, next Thursday?
So next week, we've got.
Next Thursday, we've got, yes, our workshop, our afternoon workshop. We have about, right now, about seven items. We're looking, TDOT's going to come and talk to us about choice lanes. We're going to be talking about the Old Fort widening design and some other roadway improvements. Mr. Kerr, Mr. Griffith, review of building and codes, permit fees in conjunction with city and county schools, decommissioning, potential of the city cable commission, liquor certificate of compliance update, and discuss our special census. So those are the topics we have for next Thursday, right now, for workshop. We are going to be meeting on September 19th as well. We have public hearings that evening. And I think on September 26th, we're probably looking at not meeting on the 26th. And then I guess October 3rd, we would have, that would be our first meeting of October.
Yeah, so remember, October 3rd is also the start of spring break for some of us, so I will not.
You will not be here. And so, and I know I just told Mr. Blomley that October 17th was okay for, for public hearings in October, so maybe the 10th. Miss Skip the 3rd, we'll have our 10th on the workshop and then 17th, council.
Ballberry for city and county schools.
Yeah.[1586.82]